All right, let's call the meeting to order. It's July 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We're at Oak Ridge City Hall for a regular session of the city council. First order of business will be a pledge of allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll please.
Yes, councillor Coker.
Here.
Councillor Bjarnson.
Here.
Councillor Charman.
Here.
Councillor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Ketchum.
Here.
Councillor Kenyon.
Yeah.
Councillor Hollitt.
Here.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, next is, uh, number four additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. Are any councils on the Zoom have any corrections or adjustments to the agenda? Councillor Hollitt?
Yeah, I would like to have a que- uh, just a quick conversation under business from the city administrator about the crosswalk.
Okay, uh, James, let's make that 10.3 crosswalk. Any other adjustments? In the room, that's your Kenyon or that's your Charman? I have one adjustment or addition. I'd like to add item 9.3 and discuss OFD, OFD volunteer stipend pay. Um, moving on to public comment. Um, Ms. Kelly, do you want me to read your comment or do you like to? Yes, ma'am. So I'll read one that was submitted, uh, first and then we'll go to the rest of the floor. Councillor Hollitt, do you still have a, an issue, a raised hand for a reason?
No, I'll take it down. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, council and mayor. I'm here tonight to ask you that you vote to hold the upcoming keg and cast festival at Green Waters Park as it was previously approved. When the festival began in 2008, council voted to approve it for only one year on First Street with the agreement that it would be held at Green Waters Park in the future. The Dead Mountain Echo published this decision. It would be a great revenue stream for the city and open the festival to more participants. Indeed, the event held by Cycle Oregon felt that using First Street for their festival had problems with parking noise, et cetera, and apologized to the city. They further stated that they would use Green Waters Park in the future. My house is unlivable for that day. Where I lived previously, if there was a block party slash event, all property owners had to agree in order for it to be permitted. I do not approve of the keg and cast festival being held in front of my property. The 2022 festival was very poorly run. Setup was started before 9:00 AM, though the event starts at 3:00 PM. Equipment used was dirty and moldy. Electric cords across the sidewalks were not secured. Music so loud, I had to leave my house. My sidewalk has been damaged. This event has become a nuisance and violates the Oak Ridge zoning and land use ordinance. Please vote to hold the keg and cast festival at Green Waters Park. Thank you for your consideration, Nancy Kelly. Um, any other public comment on the Zoom? Nothing seen in the room? Any public comment?
Yeah. I have a problem.
Do you can press the podium or?
My name is Stan Perrinbaum. I live in 48220 Y Drive. Uh, my first issue is the gentleman who lives across the street from me. He lives on Fifth Wheel. There's no bathroom facilities, no electricity, no water. And somehow he's allowed to live there. And I don't know if the city has any jurisdiction over that, but I'm sure they know who his contact to be able to take care of that issue. This issue he has raw food all over the yard, attracting these huge black flies that carry diseases all over the neighborhood. And I know I don't want to get sick, but they're all over my house now because he's attracting them. Uh, my second issue is a good friend of mine about a month ago, his dog was shot on his property with another gentleman who lives on the property. And so the gentleman has known the dog since he was a puppy. The dog is anything but vicious. He's the most loving, caring animal. He'll jump on you, kiss you all over. And the person who shot him knows that. And when the dog was running towards him, he shot him and then told the police he was attacking him. The dog wouldn't know how to attack a person. And yet now he's had his job reconstructed. He had a paw imitated because of the bullet. And the person who wanted to go on citation. The gentleman got shot, but then got handed back to him and nothing. Makes no sense. The police who went to the scene did not interview everybody. They interviewed the guy who shot him and left. It's not right.
Thank you.
Thanks, dude.
James, if you could, first on the Y drive, Fifth Wheel. My mind runs afoul of our ordinance, but if you could just take a look at that and see what has been done and what can be done?
We do have applicable ordinances that patients have been issued.
Okay, and, okay, yes. And the police chief doesn't obviously where the.
Fairly varied.
Yeah. All right. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, um, moving on to mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations. Um, as a reminder, uh, Forest Service and Cascade ODF have increased fire danger too high now, so, uh, new regulation is going to affect as far as what you can do. Uh, so please take a look at those and, uh, as always, be vigilant. Um, there's a wildfire safety night, which I mentioned last meeting, but, uh, it hasn't happened yet, so it's July 14th. And that runs from 5:00 to 7:00 in Green Waters Park. Uh, there'll be a good cast of organizations there and agencies that support the, uh, uh, wildfire program, including, uh, Forest Service, ODF, Lane County Emergency Management, um, Lane County Firewise, our two agencies, uh, Oak Ridge Air and others. So please come on out. There's, it's an, they have an educational part to it in the, inside the Green Waters building. And then there'll be a, uh, presentation by Forest Service primarily with an opportunity to ask questions of anyone in the, uh, on the panel. If you have questions about wildfire, uh, prevention and mitigation. Uh, second, on July 15th, there's a concerts in the park uh, beginning at 12:00 PM. I believe they have three bands queued up, so I encourage you to come out. It's free to do all. Uh, and that's all I have for announcements. Council announcements or comments? Anybody, councillor on the Zoom, have a comment or announcement? Anyone in the room?
That's fine. Um, I want to let everybody know that tomorrow at the farmers market, the Land County Public Health and Organizational Awareness Awareness will have a booth set up to, um, talk to people about mental health awareness and also anybody with any, any impressions. But the.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Last chance on the Zoom for councillor comments. Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, the consent agenda. Um, I would like to pull out June 15th for, and put it down into, uh, items removed from the consent calendar, please. Other than that, uh, do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion made by councillor Kenyon, seconded by councillor Tarman. Jack, if you call for a vote, please.
Councillor Hooker.
Aye.
Councillor Bjarnson.
Aye.
Councillor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Okay.
Ocean Carries, thank you. Uh, item nine is business from the city council. Uh, first up is 9.1, which is the Oak Ridge Keg and Cast Festival Event Application and Alcohol Permit. James, do you have a? Read it?
Yeah, so the, uh, keg and cast festival, uh, so the fifteenth year. It's scheduled for Saturday, August 12th from 3:00 to 11:00 PM. That's for the public, the setup for the event itself will start in the morning. So in front of council. It's the application to hold the event. And also approve their alcohol permits to the Keg and Cast Festival. And, uh, first the street closure. First street.
Okay, and if you aren't aware or didn't get it, there was an updated agenda item 9.1 that had a, an amendment to the recommended motion. Uh, so given that is, do I hear a motion from the council?
I move that we approve the Oak Ridge Keg and Cast Festival Event Application for August 12th, 2023 to include the request for, include the requested street closure until 11:59 PM. And approve their alcohol permit, allowing for alcohol to be served until 11:00 PM. Upper holes may not be drilled into the sidewalks or streets. If this is done, the festival will be fined for the damage to public property.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by councillor Tarman and seconded by councillor Hooker. Thank you. Discussion, uh, or questions of staff on this? On the Zoom? In the room, councillor Kenyon?
Uh, my question would be, are you, um, familiar at all with the history with, uh, what was brought up by a citizen and public comment about the Keg and Cast stadium that they default to for the Green Waters?
I'm not familiar with that. If I all Ms. Kelly's statement for recently, I think she was saying in the back of 2008.
They were held one year on the street according to Mrs. Kelly, and then with the idea that they would move to Green Waters the following year. And it never moved, it just stayed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with that, so I didn't know if you have done any history looking up or?
No, I've, I've just got this.
Okay.
Any other questions in the room?
Is there an organizer, um, available online? Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly, Amy Kelly, I believe is available online. If, if.
You want to ask that of Ms. Amy Kelly?
Um, sure. Amy? Did you hear the question?
Well, if, worst case, if, if you could just circle back, but that's, we've got some time before the event. Um, I do have one question, and maybe it's either James or Rick. Does having the festival on Third Street between Oak and Alder violate any land use or zoning ordinance to your knowledge, or do you need to work on?
It, it does not, and to that, uh, aspect of, I was going to read the purpose of the Central Commercial District, if you like.
Yeah.
Um, Central Commercial District is intended to enhance the core of the city, promote vibrant area where retail sales like manufacturing, residence use, and port dis and harmony and our city comfortable and attractive to pedestrians. Billings and uses permitted reflect the desired revised parking on the street district wide basis rather than having each individual building or used to provide parking. Streets within the Central Commercial District act as public places that encourage pedestrian bicycle travel. Or way pedestrian connections are provided so that it's a charity. So I guess the sentence that I wanted to highlight was trees within the Central Commercial District act as act as public places that encourage pedestrian bicycle.
Any other questions or comments of staff? Zoom, yeah? All right, to remind of the motion, it was, uh, to move that we approve the Oak Ridge Keg and Cast Festival Event Application for August 12th, 2023 to include the requested street closure until 11:59 PM. And to approve their alcohol permit, allowing for alcohol to be served until 11:00 PM. However, holes may not be drilled into the sidewalks or streets. If this is done, the festival will be fined for the damage to public property. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Bjarnson.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Charman.
Aye.
Councillor Hooker.
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt.
Aye. Okay.
All right, motion passes. Uh, moving on to 10.2 sealed bid auction sale of surplus 1996 international ambulance. James?
All right, so this wait.
Did you skip, yeah, did I skip one?
First 9.2.
I'm sorry, yes, I did. I'm way ahead of that. Okay, 9.2. Pardon me. Picking a date for a work slash listening session regarding food truck and portable restroom ordinances.
Right, Captain Mayor, uh, we have time to propose dates for this, uh, listening session. You guys can help us pick which one looks best for everybody. Answer this is to gather and to look at our drafts, which are starting points and write the size in for our town.
So, and it's also include a listening session for public or not?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'll start by just, I'll tell you what I can do, and that's August 30th.
Would August 31st work?
Good for me. So it sounds like we're narrowing down to the August 31st. Any, any councils online have an issue with that or a conflict that you can tell right now?
I think that's fine for me.
Thank you.
I think it's fine for me as well.
Great, thank you.
Right, I'm okay with that as well.
Six, seven, six, six, seven.
Oh, I.
Six or seven?
Yes, it's four seven. I'm okay with either.
Yeah, either one.
Um, sometimes council puts an accident issue in the earlier hour.
Councillor Hooker, is that, is six okay with you or does he say?
Six is fine. It's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, Dawn.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
For you, James, 6 o'clock on the 30th, great. Any more on that, Rick?
There is a motion on the agenda, uh.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move that we schedule the city council work and listening session regarding the proposed ordinances pertaining to food trucks and portable restrooms for Thursday, August 31st. Six.
Yeah. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by councillor Tarman, seconded by councillor Kenyon. Any other discussion? Sorry about skipping the motion.
Um, I did have a question. Last my train of thought, I, I'm hoping it comes back to me. Oh, I wanted to know, um, how soon in advance can we have the proposed ordinance since you, where you have those available?
We'll have the draft that has already been, uh, there with you guys, and that's where we'll start from.
Oh, they've already been shared?
Yeah, yeah, it should be in the package.
Yeah. And then the proposed ordinance sort of course come after.
All right, Jack, if you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Councillor Hooker.
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Bjarnson.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie. All right, on to 9.3 is what I added, and that's fire department volunteer stipend pay. So, um, this is really just a question of staff, and it doesn't have to be answered tonight because you might, you might need to gather some information, but, um, so I recently became aware, uh, of an increase in the fire department volunteer stipend pay specifically, uh, by qualifications. So driver firefighter EMR qualified, got a 20% increase from $100 to 24 hours to 120. ENT A, ENT got a 50% increase from $100 to 150 for a 24-hour period. EMTI slash paramedic got an 80% increase up to $180 for 24 hours. So I'd like to request some information just to get a better understanding of the process. Uh, number one, when was that decision made? And I get these, I'll send these to you on the right. Uh, what was the process and rationale were used to arrive at the decision? What people were involved in making the decision? Did any city employees or elected officials involved in making the decision, or their immediately family members gained financially from the decision? Have the results from the decision achieved its objectives? And with regards to volunteer affiliation, which I believe is what drove this effort, uh, how many applications have been received over the past 12 months? How many of the applicants were interviewed? And others interviewed, how many were selected to join the department? So that's the basis of my, all my questions. So I got. That's good.
Um, does anyone here know when that happened?
Yes.
Roughly six months ago. I think, but I'll have exact.
Any other council comments before we move on? Nothing seen, okay, um, now we're on item 10. And that's, uh, business from the city administrator. 10.1 is the Junction City Dispatch Contracts Update. James?
Right, uh, so last week, the Junction City City Council unanimously approved the contract for dispatch services for, uh, Oak Ridge Fire EMS and police. The contract did not change since this council approved it, with the terms, uh, prices still the same. So we will be paying, you know, we can see 7,200 dollars per month. We are currently paying LCSO about 11,150 dollars per month. Which means we will be saving um, almost $44,000 per year by switching from the city. Um, they are a little short on dispatch staff right now, a couple of them have left on some maternity leave. Uh, but they have approximately a dozen applicants who fill the positions. That are in the process of underway, so they're anticipating that there'll be a new purchase actually need to make office.
It is, and Lake County is filling in children.
Yes, yes, I've been very gracious to you, us on a month-to-month basis.
Any, uh, councillor Hollitt, I see you have a question.
Yeah, my question is for James. Will we be seeing a new contract from them, um, hopefully whenever we start doing, uh, services with them? And I did want to say to the council that I have heard good things about their new police chief.
Yes, the, the contract is included in the, uh, council package under a separate file.
Would it need to be amended, James, just to cover the date change about?
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Gotcha.
One, three, your second?
Yeah, we probably something like that.
And created.
Yeah, I had, I had an email confirming it's going to be.
Uh, against, anything else from you, councillor Hollitt?
That was it. Thank you, James.
Councillor Hooker.
Yeah, two things. Number one, I have heard some great things about the one that's coming in, the police chief. Um, and I'm confident that he's going to be a, a good guy to work with. They're going to be a good group. And I want to thank James for, um, all the hours and trials and tribulations he has put into this to get us something that will benefit us as well as Junction City. So James, I say thank you.
Agreed.
Any other questions or comments? Or move on? Thanks, James. Uh, next is finally 10.2. That's the sealed bid auction sale of the surplus 1996 international ambulance. James?
All right, um, so council will remember from, uh, May of 2022, council approved surplus sale of uh, this 1996 international ambulance. Notice a big one, uh, that has abuse in the mile. So it was approved for surplus that, that's number two. The, uh, surplus sale will occur by sealed bid. Bids are due July 14th at 5:00 PM. Uh, they also did a lot of advertising at the bus fair because something like this would obviously attract folks if you want. Living tight states and, um, we're saying there's a lot of interest there and, uh, yeah, it starts at $5,000. People are still able to put in bids and they should contact you, call it to get those bids, yeah. I posted on the website, which they cross, well, that's something, or et cetera. I think that's about it.
Okay, any questions of staff or Chief Hollitt? Well, Chief, I had one. I, I know that, and I, I know the council has approved this revenue to go back to the fire department budget. And I don't want to go against a previous council action, but what I will ask is, um, it says it's going to be used for uh, fire prevention and public education. Can you be more specific, or is it really going to end up in the reserve ambulance fund, or what do you want to do with it? If you, if you realize that revenue?
Um, our fire prevention fund has been unfunded for, um, several years now, and um, our fire prevention training in the schools and just to the general public has been pretty much non-existent. So the intent behind that was to be able to bolster our fire prevention, which is one of our primary missions that the fire department has. Um, uh, you know, it's, that's huge for our community. Uh, it would go to purchase, uh, materials, um, educational materials, but we could also purchase like a, um, inflatable training house where, um, kids would go into it, and it would have different displays and, and different, um, teaching points in that. Um, I've looked at grants for that type of, um, equipment, and they just don't have grants for it. So that would be, depending on how much we get, that would be the intended purchase for that.
Thanks, Pete. Any other questions of, uh, Chief Oliver's staff? All right. Moving on.
Mayor, I did.
Yep.
Yeah, just, I forgot to add this. I wanted to make sure I also saw the email that came out about next week's council rules work session. And just to remind them to check and see what I sent out, make sure that I've included everything, a bunch of emails.
It's just a compilation of all the comments you got from various councillors?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, please do take a look at that before our meeting. Uh, so we can. Yeah, please do take a look at that before our meeting, so we can hopefully have some great conversation about recommendations. All right, moving on to ten point three, I think Counselor Hall, you wanted to discuss crosswalk.
Thank you, so I know, gosh, this has been kind of a bone of contention contention for our community for a long time, we've had several accidents at that crosswalk. And. I know that ODOT put that in, but my understanding it is, is that it is the city's responsibility to repair it. And the upkeep on it, so I was hoping that James could, and maybe possibly Rick knows a lot of the history, we could talk a little bit about that, because there's been a lot of questions from the public. On if the city is going to fix that, if it's the city's responsibility, et cetera, et cetera.
James, or Rick? Yes, so ironically, we're still waiting on. Some of the parts from the last time it was run over, it was covered by insurance.
You mean the current chance of the person that did?
Correct. Time. Driver seems to be insured, had valid insurance, so will be making a claim on it again. That's the depth of my knowledge on that, for Robert to probably go further back. Then Robert is working with J and K Auto, so, or J and K Electric, my apologies, and parts are an issue, and Robert is with us online, Kevin.
That's absolutely the problem. Parts, parts are hard to come by, the problem is, is that was an old design. The old design they have found, parts are very expensive, so they changed everything, with that said, they quit making the old parts. To the level that cities or municipalities need, yes, it is our responsibility, and yes, I've been working on getting it done. But my hands are tied as far as getting parts shipped to the electrical company who is doing the work, and that's what they do. They work on crosswalks on a regular basis, even ODOT, a guy I went school with who works for ODOT. Has been waiting six months for a set of pedestals for his crosswalks, so it's, not that we're not trying, but you can think the past. Shipping problems to the current situation.
Thanks for bearing, Counselor Hall, did you have follow-up?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows, I absolutely do not blame our city staff for all of the, the ups and downs with the crosswalk, I just wanted. Really for public transparency to know why, what's going on, and that it's not that people are sitting not wanting to get it done. But I am curious why it is not ODOT's responsibility to take care of the, the crosswalk, why? If somebody can give me an answer, why it is the city's responsibility to take care of that?
So that is.
I could tell you a while back, a, the, the city was wanting crosswalks put in, and they went out to ODOT. To get funding to do so, ODOT said, okay, once we get it put in, it's your responsibility, so. I don't know if it was back in the. Louis era or prior to, but back in them days is when it was requested, and well, now we got it.
So that is common practice for ODOT and Lake County votes, is to, when they improve infrastructure within municipalities, they then hand this infrastructure over to the municipality. But it's common practice.
There's probably an agreement in place that states that.
So they put something in that we can't afford to take care of is essentially what I'm hearing.
Well, we asked for it, right?
Right, yeah, we, we asked for it, the, the city of Oak Ridge may not be the current council, but it was a council prior or many, many before. Regardless, it is, it's still the city who requested it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, guys.
Yes, for Kenyon.
Um, one thing I remember is it was in our transportation system plan, and it was something that our former administrator wanted to get done. Because that plan was ending, and that nothing must have been done in the plan, so it was like, let's get a crosswalk for it. Um, but regardless of that, my bigger question is. Is there any idea if these multiple accidents that keep happening there, if there's anything consistently. Coming up that's causing them, and it's really kind of. Crazy to me that there's so many accidents at that crosswalk.
ODOT does have data on that.
Do they? Yeah, what is it?
Well, I wanted to think, so I remember when I was living here, but I was excited, crosswalk was going to go in. When I came and saw it, I was like, why isn't there, that's the worst spot you could put crosswalk.
Yeah.
And I was told that it was ODOT wanted to put it somewhere else. But people, you know, you wanted it there. And so I would say its location alone of where it's at, it causes it to get hit very easily. So it's in, it's in a really bad spot as far as traffic flow area, but.
So again, we asked for it.
We asked for it, we got it, yes, but I remember during that, we did receive a little bit pushback from that location, but. We, we talked, we pushed back from citizens that are in that neighborhood and on that block, and they want to.
Yeah, it was originally supposed to go in right at the corner of that empty lot. Kind of, the empty lot is owned by like a gas station or something.
Midblock, they don't, we don't like putting the crosswalks, that style on an intersection, so midblock, there was no stuff.
I can honestly tell everybody there sitting and listening right now, it doesn't matter where you put that crosswalk. They are getting hit nationwide. Wherever you go, it does not matter the location, people are just not paying attention. That's why ODOT's having a hard time getting the parts, that's why city of Springfield's having a hard time getting parts, city of Eugene, doesn't matter anywhere you look in the United States. That's dealing with these crosswalks is dealing with the same exact problem, you could have a mile wide highway, and people are still going to run it over because it's just a magnet.
Does it, because that stuff is in the middle of the road, rather than on the. Is that?
Ninety, ninety percent of them, ninety percent of it is distracted driving because they're looking at their cell phone.
I was going to say, they are required for, if you have two lanes. So because the most dangerous way for pedestrian cross is if you have two lanes, then you walk out and a car stops, and you continue, the other car comes around, gets you. So they have to have signals, if you go, if you have one lane direction, you, you don't necessarily have to have like crosswalks with a link or.
Is the island required as well?
The island is, I don't know if it's required, but they usually put islands, and they usually have some sort of barrier.
Safer.
For the protection of the pedestrian.
So James, it's might be a long shot, but maybe, as you converse with the insurance company, their insurance company, you could outline the delays we're seeing. Maybe barter for a upgraded, more support for you. Yeah. We could try. Any other comments, I'm sorry, Counselor Hall, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one more question for either Robert or Rick, I was curious. Listening to some of the things Robert said, I'm curious, I know there are different designs for crosswalks. And the type that we have, it seems like that is not the common type I, I see in most places, so. Is there a possibility when it is redone that we have a different style of a crosswalk, maybe something that's not in the middle of a highway?
Their, their design standards for certain flows of traffic, because, and Counselor Charman was touching on that, because it's. Two, two lanes going west, two lanes going east, plus a turning lane, that's basically the design standard per D O T. It's not just O D O T, but that's national D O T, so with those standards, it's kind of where, where we're stuck at. If you go to Springfield, you got, you got Main Street, and there's two lanes east, two lanes west, turning lane. And it's almost identical, crosswalk is what we have, the reason why we have the current. Barricades up, closing that is because the, the flashers in the middle are now gone, so. Thoroughfare traffic cannot see the center flashers, so to save ourselves insurance claims or liabilities, we've closed the crosswalk. If people use it, they're using it at their own risk now, until it's fixed.
Thanks, Robert.
You bet.
All right, anything else?
I haven't got the only other option is to put lights up over the top, like you see on Bob's road. Which is pretty. And those rapid flashing beacons were a part of the twenty sixteen pedestrian safety study, and that's what they recommended then.
Yes, for Kenyon.
Um. I guess I'll have that fast.
All right, we'll move on to item eleven, which is staff and board committee commission reports. We'll go through these, and obviously if you didn't have a meeting, or just say so, and we'll move on. So eleven point one is Parks and Community Services Committee, either there, tournaments, or. Your chair, yes.
All right. So. Um, last meeting, we discussed the pump track, Tom Lyons. Here, I believe this month, they're planning to come forward to city council with a proposal. Next, we. Are going to be meeting with somebody at Harrison Dews, would like to do a skate park, update skate park in a important part. Wants to talk about signs and. Or things for the future, for a part. So that you talk about the ninety pump track, potentially looking at, well, it's not a good contract, but a more of a skills part for cyclists. Kids and mountain bikers, and how to integrate that in with the new, the offer, new bathrooms, et cetera. We talked about. The community garden watering schedule, and then lane act transportation priorities. Came up with some ideas for what to present to that.
Thanks. It's not public comment. You can wait till the end when we have public comment, if you like.
Yeah, I didn't normally start that since I've gone. I've been here for years, and I always know, it was started at, and said that I had, we can change the time, I'm just not about.
Yeah, so. Thank you, sir, yes. Eleven point two, Public Safety Committee, Counselor Hooker, are you still with us? Okay, come back if it's reconnected, next is eleven point three Audit Committee, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, yes, our committee met maybe a week ago, was it? We received our second and hopefully final draft of the audit. And the committee reviewed the discrepancies and discussed. The, is it called a management letter that you're going to be? Management response, so that's going to get sent back to the auditors, and then the audit will be complete. Filed with the state, and we will all get copies of the final, final.
Did you notice any significant changes between the two drafts?
Um. Maybe not so much as in what was listed in. You know, the, the issues, but the big difference was that after they. Reviewed and reconciled the L G I P account to our books. I'm assuming that that meant all of our books got updated. But it changed a lot of the numbers, so.
Okay. All right. Eleven point four, that's the charter review subcommittee.
So charter review is probably the same, it's going to be the same every single month, but we continue reviewing the charter.
Have you guys sort of thought about a target date for when it would go to the ballot?
Um, it's hard to pick something like that when the, the phase that we're in right now is reviewing. Everything line by line and just asking questions as though, not making suggestions for what to change, but just. You know, what kind of questions pop up in our heads about the way that it's currently written?
Yeah.
And so then we are going to afterward completely done, and we're probably about close to three quarters of the way. Then we are going to do the. Second review with, okay, what should it look like instead of this?
Thanks.
Probably at least another year. Yes.
Which would be, probably going to miss the twenty-four election.
Oh, actually, I probably have a push to try and get on that, because then it would have to go two more years.
No, you could do it, I think you could do it, between May, if you want, just a higher standard. I think to pass. That fifty percent voters, fifty percent vote. I think that's what it is. I'm looking at. Eleven point five is Budget Committee, I don't know that we have any discussed there, do we, James?
No, we will, we will be reconvening after the.
Yeah, and the years close down. Eleven point six is Library Board, Counselor Hooker.
Yeah, we had a meeting on June thirteenth, and we discussed several things, the book sale was one, we are going to have a raffle, we're just not sure when. We need more donations, more items to raffle off. They have donation jars in different places, one of them had sixty dollars in it, and Georgie bought. Movies for kids with that, different types of movies that kids would enjoy. Um, our next meeting is July eleventh, and that's all I have.
Thank you, any questions for Counselor Hooker on that? Eleven point seven is RT N P and T R T, Counselor Kenyon.
That committee wasn't able to meet in June, and we're meeting next week on the January eleventh.
Okay. Um, eleven point eight is the Planning Commission.
I think we met last month for a work session where. Cassia Partners, the. The ones doing the housing need analysis presented some. Findings and regarding our deficiency with our code. And they proposed a couple of different ideas. I think we should discuss a couple, decided we need more information going, going into it. About some of our, I think we should even also discuss a training session coming up for the end of the year that we all wanted to go to.
Is Cassidy, are they housing deeds or they targeted group management?
M I G is.
Thanks. All right, eleven point nine, O D A C, James?
Yes, O D A C met. And we do discuss great opportunities. The, the sales we'd be addressing. Later in the season as well as how we want to. Address the new sales. Also for the campus organ to see if they can run to get a prestation, maybe, but opportunities then, and opportunities with. Partnering with the Chamber of Commerce. And touch on enterprise and that. Words off.
Did you, have you heard anything about the enterprise and legislation?
I guess not.
Eleven point one zero is Special Fire District Subcommittee, Counselor Hooker, or is that Counselor Hall?
That's Counselor.
Yeah, I can give the report for that, so we met, let's see, last week on Thursday, I believe it was, was that right, Jan, Thursday? Everything's kind of running together. So we had a very comprehensive report from our feasibility study. So we had a very comprehensive report from our feasibility study, uh, feasibility consultant, Steve Abel. We went over, um, more of the status of all three jurisdictions and the four options on the table and pros and cons. Um, we looked at like, basically what a budget would look like if it was kind of pie in the sky, if we had, you know, if the whole entire area had everything they wanted to kind of give us an idea of how. Underfunded we had, we would be, you know, if we, if we had our pie in the sky dream. Um, so I think that was the last, um, big presentation, we may have one more from Steve and then. After that, we hope to have a meeting with some outside fire chiefs that are already went through. Fire authorities, special district mergers and different 190 agreements to come and talk to us. And then I really hope that we'll have something for council.
Great, any questions of, uh, Councilor Hall on that? Thank you. Um. 11.11, that's Admin Committee, Councilor Kenyon.
Admin committee also did not meet, um, and we are, you know, resume again this month.
Uh, 11.12 is the WAC Advisory Subcommittee, Councilor Hooker.
Yeah, we had a meeting, um, and I'm not sure when, my mind's gone. Um, we had Trish from, I believe it's called Conger, um, who is an amazing person. Um, we went over the, uh, information on the flyers that were hanging and all of that type of stuff and the stuff that went out. I got mine in the mail today, so in the water bill, um. Hopefully, we get a lot of response on those. Um, people can go online, they, there's a QR code on the, uh, information that we got in the mail today. That they can do it either online or they can pick one of the, uh, paper ones up, do it. The old fashioned way and then just drop them in the blue boxes and those are all listed on where they are. It was a good meeting.
Thank you, and, uh, and Trish is homegrown, so I'm, I'm not surprised she's a super.
She is homegrown, she is also well overworked.
Yeah. Any questions of, uh, Councilor Hooker on the?
What's the blue box, is that a ballot box?
It's kind of like a blue box, yeah, yeah, I mean like a ballot box, it's what you'll put your, the paper, um. Survey. Action sheets, yeah, yeah.
I guess I've never seen them, is it something new that got installed in all these?
It is, yes ma'am.
See it right there in the.
Has just been.
Oh.
Thank you, James, I didn't know what there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think today she's gotten 180 responses already virtually, so.
How long is the, oh, share it by July 31st?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then is it your committee that's gonna be, um, reviewing all of those?
I think Chrissy, correct me if I'm wrong, it is our committee, correct, with Trish's help.
Yes, and we specifically requested for the raw data from those surveys to come to council so that they can see that, but that will be culminated. Um, to go out to citizens so they can see and, um, so that those surveys have been collected. Um, from the Fourth of July Festival, a couple days ago, we've done some door to door stuff and so there's, they've been real, we've been all really pushing it a lot. In the last week.
Good.
Right.
Will, will it just be the raw data or will they have a report?
No, I said that the council will have a copy of what the raw data is and that the, the outreach committee is gonna put together a summary. That'll go out to citizens.
I think Trish is gonna compile it, didn't she, and offer you those and then. As well as offering the raw data, is that what I heard?
Yes, am I cutting out?
No, it just sounded like you were actually gonna be compiling all the data and coming up with.
Oh, no, 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 I am so sorry, no, 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 the raw data that is coming back from the outreach will go to the committee. And the committee gets a chance to see everything and the counselors can see that too, the, the consultant is the one putting out the summary.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, um, next is 11.13, the WAC Funding Committee. Uh, we did not meet last month and our next meeting is July 27th, the hybrid meeting at the OIP Conference Room or online. Uh. Item 12 is Items Removed Consent Agenda, so there was just one minor error on the minutes from June 15th. But it's a significant error, if I can find it. So there was discussion about. The budget. Passing and. Statement made that there are things you can do if you go beyond June 30th, but what I meant to say was. Or what I did say was there, there are, there's nothing in the statute that talks about actions that you can take. You haven't passed a budget by June 30th, so. Jackie, I can't find it now, but if you could just take a look at that and just correct it to, there is no, there is no written guidance after June 30th.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Huh?
With that change, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes with that change from June 15th, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, I guess it wouldn't be, uh, Jackie, uh, let's just put it this way, all in favor, say aye please. Okay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those who pass, it's carries, if I get the wrong ones, that will be tell me.
14.2.
About the budget. Uh, the only comment I see from you in that section says, may I question ask if council wanted to continue 30 minutes?
Okay, must have gotten the wrong set of minutes, because. Yes, I did, so on the minutes of June 7th.
Oh.
9.1. Uh, my second comment says. We decide to make the changes tonight, we will have to hold another public hearing, understanding there is, it says, right now it says there is a guidance for operating the government after June surveys and whatever. But really, what I really said is there is no guidance for operating the government. So. We've already passed the minutes, but. Any, uh, objections to making those changes?
Um, I still want to see what's here.
9.1, second comment. You see my, my second comment?
See the motion.
First.
Oh. So just changing one word to know.
Yeah.
No objection.
Okay. Moving on to.
So that we still need to approve the other ones because we have them from that.
We just, we just did it for, actually. Took a voice vote.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All right, uh, moving on to item 13, ordinances and resolutions with public comment. Uh, 13.1 is Resolution 15 dash 2023 adoption of the 2023-2028 Lane County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. James?
All right, so City Oak Ridge has been part of the Lane County Multi-Districtional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, HMP. Um, and it has to be updated every five years. So we've been going through the process of doing that, it's, uh, I have a page document, um. First half is basically countywide stuff and then there are annexes for each city in Lane County. So it took part in a lot of tiny meetings with, um, other city leaders, um, around the county. We did our annex a little bit, um, as you might imagine, you're dangerous from wildfire, are we up a little higher in priority? Based on what we've drawn during the last five years. Um. So some, some peaking there. Um. Basically, we just need to approve, uh. The new version, uh, because it will make us eligible for female rings. The primary reasons, um. And the Oak Ridge Annex starts on page 366 of the. Probably 500 page document, I also attached the old version, you know, the E version, so most compare the. Changes from, uh. The last version, see if we've added some additional projects that we would like to get done, the stormwater upgrades. Very same levy, et cetera. That is. Where we're at, so. Happy to answer questions about process.
So we get, get a motion first and then we'll, uh, move into discussion.
Yeah, I move, we approve Resolution 15 dash 2023 to adopt the 2023 dash 2028 Lane County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan after a first reading.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilor Tarnam, second by Councilor Kenyon, discussion or questions of staff on this and, you know, I know that. The annex is all already voting on there, James, and not really, there's things we don't agree with in the. Master plan done by Lane County, it's not really our issue, it's our part, right?
Yeah, it's basically approving our annex and adopting the plan in general, obviously with 500 page document, we're not gonna. Agree with absolutely everything in there, and some of the other city annexes, well, that's their business, but. We do have to officially adopt it.
Yeah, so, so James has done a great job racking and stacking the. Sort of the hazards and what they, what they bear on the city. And then what you do is you use that tabulation and you look for projects that mitigate those hazards and, like you mentioned this. Couple he mentioned and they also talked about a project of upgrading Dead Mountain Communications Facility. Talk of swapping out the fuel tanks that are kind of aging out, like public works and one other one, too? You know, as well as, um, other things like, uh. Looking at an alternative water source. Yeah. Should we lose, whatever reason, the aquifer source, so, you know, exercise a, a surplus water right and, you know, and these are really long range. Very expensive mitigations that you want to have on paper, so should a grant come around or you can point to it and say. Here it is, we've said before, we want this, the people have said we want this stuff.
Upgrades to the airport.
Right, right, the runway work that needs to be done there, if it doesn't get done, other, other means, so. Any other, any questions on, online of, of staff on this plan and the annex? In the room? All good? All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Hooker?
Uh, hang on, Jackie.
Oh.
I do have to call for public comment before we vote, so. Anyone in the room or on the Zoom platform have a comment about this resolution, we're getting ready to pass the natural hazards. Mitigation plan and the Oak Ridge Annex. Nothing heard, thank you, uh, once again, Jackie, sorry.
Okay. Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Counselor Coker? Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollit?
Aye.
Obviously carries and we'll just call Councilor Coker, lost communication, I guess. All right, uh, I'm willing to entertain another motion if there is one ready to be made.
I move, we approve Resolution 15 dash 2023 to adopt the 2023 dash 2028 Lane County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan after a second reading by Title Lonely.
Second.
Okay, I, I got it, all right. Most of this data, Councilor Tarnam, second by Councilor Kenyon, we're going to read the resolution. And we're going to read, and then we're going to vote and then we're gonna read it by title.
All right, first reading of Resolution Number 15 dash 023, Resolution Adopting in 2023, 2028 Lane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas natural hazards and disasters are an ever increasing concern for many communities in Warren, especially Oak Ridge. For in recent years, the area has been plagued with multiple fires, floods, storms, et cetera. And whereas the Lane County Board of Commissioners and the other cities, some of the county also approved and adopted the attached 2003, 2028 Lane County Natural. Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, NHMB. And whereas the 2023-28 Lane County NHMB includes Oak Ridge and addresses specific issues and projects to mitigate risk in the Oak Ridge community. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Oak Ridge. 2023, 2028 Lane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, we adopted its entire system of the city of Oak Ridge's natural hazard mitigation plan. Give further resolve of this resolution, update by 30 days after it's announced.
Thank you. Uh, now we're gonna do a vote and the motion was to approve Resolution 15, 2023 to adopt the 2023 to 2028 Lane County Natural Hazers Mitigation Plan. After a second reading by Title Lonely. Jackie, do you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Do you want me to just skip Counselor Coker? Then, or?
Um, did she show up online, Colleen, or not?
Aye, and then she popped back out.
Okay, so you can skip her, this.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Hollit? Aye. Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, motion passes, if you. All right, moving on to 14, public hearings. Um.
Um.
Yes, Jackie.
Was it read by Title only or did I miss?
I go for a change. Thank you, Jackie, all right, uh, second reading of Resolution Number 15 dash 2023, Resolution Adopting in 2023, 2028 Lane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
All right, thanks, Jackie. Uh, 14.1, which is public hearing on intent to sell surplus city property. 76410 Douglas Street, tax lot 21 dash 35 dash 16 dash 14 dash 08900. Um, are there any objections to moving into public hearing by any counselor? Okay, yeah.
Not an objection, but are we gonna do all of them in one public hearing, okay?
Individual.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll open the public hearing for the intent to sell city surplus property at 76410 Douglas Street. Have you had a staff report or some sort of report?
I do, um, in, in the agenda, though, we tried to cover all requirements in the ORS, we're selling, uh, city property. Such as a description of, of the piece of property, tax lot number, uh, size, 0.237 acres, vacant land. Zone residential. And the basic, um. And the use of the land, the buyer intends to. that either resident to place a home of some sort on the property in that empty land right next to railroad. A couple blocks from this. And it's been vacant for a long time. The refund price, twenty-two thousand dollars. Which we believe is within paramarket value, we actually originally had three offers on this property. But the solaris offered was by far the highest. And also higher than their own initial offer. This way, the council offered it, that City Council actually accepted the other two potential buyers. Brought out immediately after we set down to their initial offers for the property. So we are confident that it is within paramarket value. Uh, proceeds from this sale, we vote in general on. And our realtor record. For the real estate, it was Angela, really about Joyce here. What is here? And oh, this is the one I needed to make a correction on. Is this a four percent commission? On the Douglas Street, huh?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's not a five percent commission. It is the lower four percent commission because it's considered in-house sale of zone. Other realtors deal with, so it's a lower commission rate. Probably about a thousand dollars, and then all needs to be disclosed to the public. Like, thank you, doing things great for living together, because there's a lot of affect back and forth. This is just one of three.
Okay, do you know what the prospective buyer is online or in the room?
I think they were invited, but. Why?
I was going to give them opportunity, they had a presentation, but otherwise. Okay, we're going to move into the public comment part of this for for seventy-six four ten Douglas Street. So first, we'll take comments of comments in favor. Online, any comments in favor? Comments in favor?
All right, there's a writer person.
Is that a comment in favor? Yes.
I think that this is just a wonderful state of twenty years old and new home here in Oak Ridge. And I mean, usually your patients, which I'm ready to be building, but we were just very delighted to be able to find somebody that can do it.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to comments and opposition.
And space now.
Is it about a comment in opposition to this property sale?
No.
A little bit later, sorry.
I mean, everything.
Comments and opposition? Comments and opposition? All right, moving on to comments in general. Comments in general?
I'm glad to see that there's a a little family buying it. Unfavored zones that the person who uses or letting people camp up, let's say, on the property and turn it into a situation we have someplace that you gene that's invading our part of Oak Ridge.
Thank, thank you for coming. One more comment in general. All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing for seventy-six four ten Douglas Street. And move into any discussion from counselors, Counselor Kenyon.
I was just curious on the agenda bill. That on the back of it, this information, this is in the final list.
It's always, this is for the NHMB.
Okay. Oh, I'm reading it. Okay, I read it.
Any other comments? Online? All right, nothing heard. So what I'll do now is ask for a motion.
I move to allow the CA to execute the sales agreement and finalize the sale of seven six four one zero Douglas Street. All second.
All right, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Hooker. Any more discussion on this? Guidance for the CIA? Nothing heard. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson?
Hi.
Counselor Coker? Counselor Hallit?
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Counselor Hooker?
Hi.
Counselor Charman?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to fourteen point two. Which is public hearing on intent to sell surplus city property. OIP Oak Ridge Industrial Park Lot twenty, tax lot twenty-one dash thirty-five dash twenty-two dash twenty dash zero two four zero zero. Any counselors opposed to entering into public hearing? Objections? All right, we'll declare this public hearing open on OIP Lot twenty. James, do you have a staff report?
Sure. All right, so this is Lot twenty, Oak Ridge Industrial Park, it is one point one seven acres. It is on opening. And it is vacant land, zone for mixed use. The the buyer is Mr. Donald Grant. Who after some back and forth negotiation with the city agreed upon price of thirty thousand dollars for the lot. Which is twenty-five thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars per acre. City staff, City Council, and realtor record, believe this is indeed within the uh, paramarket value for the property. Also fit with recent appraisals. That's higher than recent appraisals. So I'd be running for about one thousand acre. And to date, the highest we've sold vacant land in the OIP was nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars per acre. Of course, that's back to nineteen, it's price of increase. So that's why when we expect that price to rise, now the things that are going again, falling out. So that is the refund price. This, the funds have to be reinvested in industrial park. And the sale also has to be approved by the USDA. Which we anticipate will happen, because it's within the requirements. Mr. Grant intends to build a winery and also a duplex on the property. And this one is also a four percent commission. To in-house sale, other realtors deal with. Think I covered all the bases? Yes.
Yeah. You know, it's Mr. Grant online, I know he's not in the room, but. Again, because, yep. Okay, not present, so we'll move on to public comment, and this again is for OIP Lot twenty. Um, at at the on opening. So first, we'll start with comments in favor. Counselor Hallit, sorry about that, I didn't see your hand, go ahead.
I'll speak whenever it's time for Counselor to speak.
Okay, thanks, yeah, we'll do it after the public hearing, thank you. Uh, comments in favor?
My, right, Jason, I enjoy Pittsburgh. Four eight one one six, I would appreciate in Oak Ridge. And I think this is going to be kind of an exciting move, but this year, which we put in two um, separate duplex. One is the one front, and it's going to be um, with a kind of winded. I don't understand it exactly, because there's no room, you know, for great planting of vineyards there, but it has something to do with wine, and it will be an interesting business for Oak Ridge.
Any other comments in favor? Comments in opposition? Comments in opposition? Comments in opposition? Comments in general?
Just curious if it's going to be Airbnb type or actual rentals for people to be able to start housing markets and.
Believe it's actual rent. I did also want to mention, I misspoke when I said the highest price we've ever sold vacant land for. That was actually the second highest, the highest is twenty thousand acres, tax and pride.
Comments in general? Comments in general? All right, see none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council discussion.
Counselor Hall.
Yeah, I just wanted to be transparent with the public, I voted no on this property sale at our last meeting, and that was, I felt that building a duplex there in the industrial park wasn't the best business move. Um, I feel like businesses that might want to build there may not want to build if there is a duplex next to them, since it looks very residential, so uh, my opinion at the time was a no vote on that, and I since have spoke to um, Dawn, and he said that he is actually modifying his business plans, and there might be a chance, he might be putting the the winery tasting room up front and the duplex in the back, but he is still working on um, some revisions to that, so I do support the winery business, and I hope that is very fruitful, I just really hope that um, that it's not a duplex up front.
Thank you. Any other counselors have a comment on this? Public hearing, that's okay, Kenyon?
Um, I have a question, I I understood in all the discussions that we've had about this in the past, that it was going to be one duplex and then the the two buildings for making wine. But in public comment, I think I heard there's going to be two duplexes and the wine. So what he was planning to do, according to the chief, he said he joined the ads and made some revision. Because this plan, the revision sometime before, he placed it in the wine amount, and the codes may have changed. And he may revise the concept they currently have. So I think that what he's planning to do is put his winery, the wine tasting room in the front. And one duplex, you know. Okay, so just one duplex. I think he planned on two.
Yep.
Two, Joe. So.
Yeah. I can confirm what Joy is saying is also what he expressed to me, that he plans to move the winery up front. And the du- the one duplex in the back.
Okay, I was just thinking that there was probably not enough room on one acre for two duplexes and a winery. Uh, and but I would assume that that would have to go through planning to do with anyone. All of this, guys.
Um, depending on outright use and knowing from you. We'll go through planning commission, then we'll go through planning, you know, site plan, yes.
Like a building.
Um, minor set review evaluates the setbacks and use.
Excellent.
Most residential will only receive a minor set interview. Wine case more like a major site interview, but say that 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 doesn't guarantee that there would be a major, and if there wasn't a major, then it wouldn't go to the planning commission. That for you.
Well, I guess.
They kind of third much, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, I.
So could they do, could you build a ten-story skyscraper?
That would be major site interview, it was a planning permission, yes. But a duplex is minor set interview, it does not go to a planning permission.
But two duplexes?
Their residential home, if 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 that is the case, I don't know, even if it's two.
But but even the minor site plan review, it makes sure that it conforms with the current zoning code.
Yeah. Like.
Property lot size versus occupied adult size.
Somebody's going to look at it and make sure that it's going to be okay, all right. Um, and then the only other question was in regards to the I guess I'm confused about, in one of our discussions, it was said that the buyer would have to declare whether or not they were using the lot for residential or business.
For mixed use, they have to comply with one of the zoning codes, right?
Right.
I mean, can they do both?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I was unclear because of the discussion. Okay.
It's just they just have to declare which one of them is on.
A lot of the codes will allow for multiple uses, or.
Yeah.
But like, the mixed use will allow for two to use it on the same lot. So commercial will allow for one structure to be residential, one structure to be.
Counselor Hall, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry, I forgot to take my hand down.
Okay. Anything else on this before we ask for a motion? All right, so your motion?
I move to allow the CA to execute the sales agreement and finalize the sale of Oak Ridge Industrial Park Lot Number Twenty, subject to USDA approval.
Your second?
Second.
Right, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Charman. Any more discussion on sending this to the CA for action? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Bjornson?
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Counselor Hallit?
Hi.
Counselor Charman?
Hi.
Counselor Hooker?
Hi.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to fourteen point three, that's public hearing on the intent to sell surplus city property at four seven eight nine nine Highway fifty-eight, tax lot twenty-one dash thirty-five dash one seven dash one four dash zero six four zero two. Also known as the old Public Works Building. Any objections from counselors to opening the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll declare the public hearing open for four seven eight nine nine Highway fifty-eight. Uh, James?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so this is the old Public Works shop, uh, right on Highway fifty-eight. It's one point eight nine two acres, uh, it is on C three, which is Highway Commercial District. The agreed upon price, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the buyers can be insured, intend to remodel the property, and then move it apart of their um, purchase, which is a high-end custom hot rod and classic car construction business. Just the customs. And they state that that will come with employment opportunities. There's a letter from George's attached to the materials, even to City Council, explaining more about their business. Um, there were initially three offers received this property, George's was. There were initially three offers received this property. Jordan's was. The highest. Also. Slightly higher than the most recent appraisal. Which accounts for the current condition of of the building, which is not great. I would say that the roof leaks a little bit that needs to be replaced. It's going to cost forty-five thousand. Practice, which. Cost ten thousand dollars if they so choose to replace those. We do have a report on that from the city engineer. In short, since it's not that bad, but it could become bad, but it was a major interest in one. But will eventually be replaced. The proceeds from the sale will go to the general fund. However, some of the proceeds will need to be used to build a. Facility to store the city's street cheaper cleaner. Vehicle because it can't breathe or it does breathe and we would have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace that. So part of the sales school will go. To protecting our current assets. The commission on this one is five percent. There are new realtors involved. And. We haven't used the building much in. Recent years, but there's one tenant applying one of the Vegas. I already let you know that. Will be getting pretty good soon. So you'll have plenty of opportunity to find another location. Don't have to speak that issue. So yeah. It's more than more than fair price. We're excited that I'm in the business.
All right, you know, the Jordans are down there.
I can never invite, but I don't think.
Okay. All right. The next. Did you have a comment, Counselor Ken?
I'll wait till our section, I guess. Is it or is that now?
We're gonna go to the statements in favor of this sale. That's. The old public works building. Statements in favor?
Once again, I rise to speech in favor of this as a private citizen. And this is a very exciting opportunity for which not only with the being. Sold at a very excellent price with a condition in ten. And what these people are doing at this stand to bring that car that. I understand it's a rather large business and this will only be, this will be a statement of it. That it's my understanding and it's going to bring lots of other. Activities to whole bridge because they have. A major period high end. Car shows. And a lot of the purchase. Stand to be showing. I hope you're. Please. Bye. Putting new base on the highway.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Seven, six, three, four, nine, Willamette Way. I think this is a great opportunity. If I heard correctly, it's going to be a classic car. Mechanic shop, and I'm hoping that within this. Opportunity, they can include the high schoolers who may be interested in doing some kind of an internship or partnership with this business. I think it would be a great. It's a it's a pastime for classic car rebuilding and. And I I'm really excited and I can't wait to see what comes out of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. One more comments in favor. Moving on to comments in opposition. Comments in opposition? Comments in opposition? Statements in general? Statements in general? Statements in general? All right, nothing heard, so. We will close the public hearing on the sale of four seven eight nine nine highway fifty-eight. And open it up to council discussion. Counselor Kenyon, did you have a?
Yeah, I wanted to find out whether or not. Maybe it's not something that we're pretty to, but was there? There was a second appraisal done, right? That something we are pretty to? Like the buyer?
I don't know if the buyers had a separate appraisal or not. But I don't think we would necessarily be pretty to that.
So they this is the view. They want it there. We did that.
They could.
Any other questions of staff? Comments? All right, entertaining a motion.
I move to allow the C A to execute the sales agreement and finalize the sale of the old public works building. Located at four seven eight nine nine highway fifty-eight.
Again. All right, motion was made by Counselor King and second by Counselor Tarman. Any discussion on sending this to the C A for action? All right, nothing heard. Jackie, offer a vote, please.
Yes. Counselor Hooker?
I.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Counselor Hollit?
I.
Counselor Charman?
I.
Counselor Kenyon?
I.
Mayor Ketchum?
I.
Okay, motion carries. Wraps up the public hearing. So around the item fifteen, which is appointments. Fifteen point one, Kelly Wine, application for the R T and P T R T committee.
Right, Mr. Philly, my name is briefly agreed to. Those happening for. religion on the R T M P T R T committee. He also serves on the O D A committee. Secretary for that. Great minutes last. Last meeting. Really short on people on this committee. Good to have. You know, some of our delegation is. Catched, and I know I saw him online earlier. Yeah.
Counselors with questions? That's a thing.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you're familiar with the committee and what it does.
James told me a few things of what it did and, and, yes.
Okay, in that interest, yeah. Good.
Counselors online, have any questions of Kelly? Yeah, I'm excited to see your application, and I think your professional background will bear well. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Hmm, I don't think there's a motion yet.
Right, thank you, Jackie, for keeping me straight.
I try.
I move, we appoint Kelly Wine to seat four of the R T and P T R T committee for a term expiring in December of twenty twenty-five.
All right, second. Motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Tarman. Any discussions further discussion? All right, now, Jack, call for a vote, please.
Okay. Counselor Hollit?
I.
Counselor Hooker?
I.
Counselor Charman?
I.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Counselor Kenyon?
I.
Mayor Ketchum?
I.
Okay.
Motion passes, welcome aboard. All right, now we're moving on to item sixteen, sir. I'm sorry to make you wait so long, but it's time for public comment.
Oh, yeah. I've been here so long and everybody knew. I know nobody but you know her. What I got to say is. I'm sorry I didn't listen here in the beginning. But I want to know. When that man shot that dog, why didn't he get arrested? He shot at the city limit. I didn't call up the state police and dial it out of that. And anyone know why he didn't get arrested? But then give me a call back. The state police. Tell me that. And then they just, you got all these police cars. Why don't you sell them? The church rotten away. I can't even say it. Get rid of them. And then when I talk to the state police, they tell me they have many problems in Oak Ridge. They called to say. Star six, seven, seven, and we'll come out there. We won't take care of everything. And that's what they told me. And then I even told him to, I even told him once. He's supposed to get more back. But from Sam. The head of the state police department. Because they couldn't believe that man never got arrested for shooting the dog. You know, he didn't have the right to shoot the dog. And I get to come here all the time. And then I stopped coming. Pardon me? Yeah, I had the name. Yes. Yeah. My name is John. Look, I made everybody smile. I gotta make somebody smile at least once a day. Okay, that's all. And on two, it's about those state police cars. You got so many of them there. They're worth thousands of dollars, and you may sell them. You're putting them to the auction there. I bought one one time and kind of appointed on the auction. That thing was fast. But they're gonna sell it. It's money. You need money. So let's get rid of some of the cars.
Thank you. See, maybe the police chief could. Give us a brief on the incident. And what what he knows.
Yeah, I can request that. I think you won't comment on the investigation, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
What he can do, what he can tell us. And I know that we're always auctioning off cars. But I know that it probably takes ten to make five run over there, but.
Yeah, that is in process. We are going to surplus.
Yeah. All right. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
I just. I'm going to take that, but all moving up. The eight, about. Oh, I forgot my. Never been. Sorry, you're welcome to step over here when this. There you go. I don't know. Why you want to pass the street? I don't know, Megans. My fault was in the city tonight about installing a dead inside and slow side on Jasper Street. Especially the slowest time since somebody dangerous has waited thousand on the street. And one of these days. Someone's gonna end up hitting someone or. An animal and killing it. So. I'm waiting to know if the city can possibly install. Then in and slow side on the street. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, my name is Wayne Wong. I live on four eighty-seven. I need to have proof of some comments. This earlier, the first one, so we totally come back to the second one. So I'm here. I'm happy to be here. First of all, that businesses are moving up here and stuff like that. That's great. That's what opens these. One thing that would entice other businesses to come forward. Because if they have a sense of security, knowing that. What? Happens at the U G will happen here. And I know that. Policies that come out of Portland. Actually, Salem, but Portland influences it. Is very, very difficult on businesses to remain in business. And it also is part of communities. I'm suffering right now from property. Egression on. The value of my home plus the home of the neighborhood because of. Irresponsible property owner who is letting his son live on a property. Doesn't have sanitation, doesn't have running water, doesn't have electricity. They have an illegal trailer parked up front and violation of city code. And. If. If you don't have means of of enforcing it, I'll be willing donate some money to. Give some money. If it takes money to to have enforcement done. I'll do, we'll do a donation drive. I mean, it could be. Done temporarily, and then once we get rid of this problem. Brand fact. It is, you know. Happy with going over on my guy. I will to all the city council people to come over, like if you're unsure about the situation. And in closing, I was prompted to come over here because earlier. The son. Was throwing out a bucket that he was using. There's my, what I saw inside for human waste. It now speaks over there on that property and do it against the son. I said, I said, I have a video camera. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Hammond, do you have a? Public comment?
Yes, sir. Seven, six, three, four, nine, Willamette Way. I have a question regarding the the crosswalk. Is that gonna get replaced and is is the? The liability on the city to pay for that replacement, or is it the individual that took it out or whatever that situation was? Just wondering how it's gonna get replaced and when? Thank you.
Assuming it's like. The last time it was. Destroyed. The driver's insurance should cover it. But you never know for sure until the claim is actually paid. But he appears to have valid insurance.
And we're told by public works that it's going to be a while because the parts are in short supply.
Okay, thank.
Any other public comment?
I don't have a tree much time. Just observing today. I promised about this. I think it's a good thing. And I was reading to their. Probably hard to lose, because I can't tell people what people say that. That it's not working. I believe that if it's not completely working, the city. Is in charge of maintaining that and the state says they will maintain it. If it's not. Had it probably maintained, I think they. Not sure. I better, I'm trying to, I think if they call that in the fact of nuisance. It's likely to be posted property. Someone comes on your property and gets hurt, they can sue you, but you do have posted that that's kind of a little sad. But if it's not exactly a hundred percent working, then. If it's on my property, I just. Presumably completely, and until the funding came up, it's back for. They say it's obviously before it's put in. That's kind of the reading I got on the statement today.
Thank you. Any other public comment? On the Zoom? All right, it takes us to item seventeen, which is German. Do I hear a motion?
I still move.
It is your, thank you.